Thomas Paine. Sam Adams. Benjamin Freitlin. These men spoke up for what they thought was right. From their courage came such documents as the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. From their willingness to speak what was sometimes unpopular but right, we enjoy such liberties as freedom of speech, the right to keep and bear arms, and freedom of religion. There are those who still wish to oppress our freedoms, and there are still patriots willing to stand up and defend life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Men like Zeb Bell, who honor our founding fathers and what they stood for. It's now time for Zeb at the Ranch, speaking up and defending your freedoms. Brought to you by Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and all of the other great advertisers on the program. And now, Zeb Bell.
These words make a lot of sense. We cannot continue to send our children to Caesar for their education and be surprised when they come home as Romans. Think about it. Here comes Kate Smith. And God bless America on a Monday, July the 20th. Zeb at the Ranch, good morning, patriots. Call in with a pledge. And a good, good morning to you and yours. I'm Zeb Bell, Zeb at the Ranch, and of course, brought to you by our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you, very safe, clean environment, and of course, the best in tires. Along with our friends at Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, at 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley, helping you get back to being you. Right now, let's go to the phone line and have our pledge of allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My friend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, well done, Doug. Thank you very much. Call back later. Appreciate it, my friend. Right now, we're quickly gonna go to the weather forecast, and the weather brought to you by K and R Rental at 256 South 600 West of Hayburn. Oh, these are good, good people, headed up by Roger and the crew with the best of tools and equipment for whatever job you have at hand. That's right. I don't care if it's working in your garden or putting in water lines, whatever the case might be, they've got the rental tools and equipment for both long and short-term rental at K and R Rental. And the number to call, they're there right now, 678-3122. And right now, here's our weather.
Warmer temperatures continue for the rest of this week, and maybe some thunderstorm action by middle of the week. Here's your weather forecast, sunny skies today. We are expecting a high of 90, nice and clear for this evening with a low of 56 for tomorrow. Sunny skies, high of 93, mostly clear and 62 for Tuesday night. By Wednesday, we do have a slight chance of rain showers, thunderstorms in the late afternoon, partly sunny skies, gonna be muggy, high of 91, 20% chance of showers or thunderstorms before midnight, mostly cloudy and a low of 60. Thursday, pretty much the same, with a high of 90. That's what gets your weather for Zeb at the Ranch.
Oh, thank you, Gina. Appreciate that. And the weather brought to you by K and R Rental, and Roger and the crew, they're there right now. They've got all the power rakes and all the rodded tillers, and they've got all the heavy equipment. They got everything over there for you. So please, if you're not sure what you need to finish the job, just give them a call, 678-3122. K and R Rental, 256 South 600 West of Hayburn, right there on the Burley-Paul Highway. Caller, I'm gonna ask your indulgence just for a minute, I'll be right with you. Don't forget Daryl's Cleaners, too, at 1223 Albion Avenue in Burley. We have been taking our clothes in there for years and years, and they are the best at what they do, and with the dry cleaning, it elongates the life of your clothing, and it just makes you feel good to look sharp. Well, take your clothes into Daryl's Cleaners. Kevin and Cindy can help you, they will, at 1223 Albion Avenue in Burley. Daryl's Cleaners, waiting right now to serve you. Real quick, too, our friends over at Ramsey Heating and Electric, and I mean, they are our friends, and they've been absolutely the best for almost seven decades. Wow. I mean, they're located at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. Number to call, 678-0459. What else do you need to know? Well, they're open 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and literally all your heating, cooling, and electrical needs, and great amount of experience in serving you. The best, Ramsey Heating and Electric in Burley. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Yes, good morning, Zeb. After Antifa and Black Lives Matter burned down our cities and destroyed the economy, the, uh, will it be oil refineries, bridges, and dams?
Well, I'm more than worried about what can and might happen with the letting go of coming down with a heavy hand on these protesters, and what's happening in Seattle, what's happening in Portland, what's happening in Chicago with, again, over the weekend, almost 60 people shot, what's happening in New York, what's happening all across the country? You've gotta stop this, and we're not stopping it. And the Democratic-led cities and communities that are saying, Trump, go home, stay out of the way, it's just elongating the problem, and I see nothing but chaos for the next couple of months, which I think is going to be curbed after the election if Biden wins and the left wins. Look out. I think all bets are off.
Well, I think what I see happening is the military's gonna have to come in and take control. Otherwise, this country would be duck soup for China and Soviet Union to roll in and take over.
We're almost there, Tony. I make no bones about this, that I am very concerned with this lax attitude that's going on, like with this Ted Wheeler up in Portland. What an imbecile. This man is the mayor of Portland, and he's allowing all this garbage to take place, all this insurrection to take place, and then he turns around and blames the federal government and Trump? I mean, this is complete idiocy.
Well, the drug hotels control Mexico, and Antifa and Black Lives Matters, their agenda is to control the United States.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where it's at.
I agree with you, and I just really, I don't know what the answer is, other than a very heavy hand right now. And I mean, a heavy hand from the federal government. We've gotta clean these cesspools up, and I hate to call beautiful city like Seattle, Portland, et cetera, cesspools, but you can't let the vermin take over like they are. Tony, God bless you and Mary, and thank you for your call.
No one cares, Zeb.
All right, buddy. Caller number two, stand by, I'll be right there, I promise. I wanna remind everybody about what's gonna be happening, starting this next week, and that's gonna be the Minidoka County Fair and Rodeo, July 27 through August 1. They're gonna have so much doggone fun over there. Welcome to the Minidoka County Fair and Rodeo All-American Flair at the Minidoka Fair. Don't forget this, they've got everything going on, and they're gonna have an open rodeo on Friday and Saturday nights at 7:30 PM. They're gonna have junior rodeos, they're gonna have a PMT concert. I'm kinda giving you a rough overview right now, they're gonna have a Dutch oven cobbler and ice cream social, oh boy, that's gonna be next Wednesday night at 7:30. All kinds of fun, and I mean, these are the nicest people in the world over there on that committee. Minidoka County Fair and Rodeo, July 27 through August 1. And real quick, we also want to acknowledge our friends at Dino's Septic Service. You know, they do so much to make sure that your life is just a little bit more enjoyable. They know you don't wanna be standing out there pumping out a septic tank, ooh, no, in 90-degree weather, are you kidding me? And liquid waste removal, or sewer and drain lines cleaned, they do it all. The best in backhoe services, water and sewer lines installed, septic inspections. Please get ahold of them today. Dino's Septic Service, numbers 436-6526, or 678-1638. The best, Dino's Septic Service. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. Well, Sean and I are probably some of your owner and listeners, but in that lifetime...
Keith, wait a minute, wait a minute, Keith, you're not coming through hardly at all, your phone is really wavering. Is there something different about your phone or something this morning? I'm hardly able to hear you.
I don't know, but I, I lost touch with you on the other side.
It's, it's voip-ing out on me. If you could call in on another line, I'd love to talk to you.
She's gonna be gone, she's gonna be a parent now, and she's...
All right, well, we can't get you, we can't get you on the air if it's gonna be like this, it's, it's just not gonna work, so. Try to call me back, and we'll see how it works. Call me back, please. And calls are welcome, 436-22441-8669274587. Yeah, when those phone lines, cell phone lines, et cetera, start voip-ing out and wobbling and warbling and everything, we can't have that on the air, I'm sorry. Denny's Restaurant, my goodness, 611 North Overland in Burley, and another location at 291 Pole Line Road in Twin Falls. Don't forget the best of menu choices for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, anytime, all the time, all the desserts, great people serving you. Oh, boy, I mean, they're putting forth their best foot every day to make sure that they serve you with the best of food, and they do, at America's Diner. We are going to be over there this Thursday for Zeb's Lunch Bunch, this coming Thursday, the 23rd, this week, and we urge you to come on down and join us at Denny's Restaurant, 611 North Overland in Burley. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
I don't know what Sean did, but he's blessed. And so, anyway, there's not many of your listeners that are as old as Tony or I, because I've seen a lot of presidents come and go. One of my favorite presidents was Ronald Reagan, and the other is Donald J. Trump.
Mm-hmm.
Now, during this election period, they're blaming Donald Trump for this, this terrible virus that we've got, and I think that's so wrong, because what did he do? He appointed the governors to take care of their states. Now, how much more wisdom would there be?
Keith, you know as well as I do, and you and all my listeners are very sharp people and understand the circumstances. The political aspect of using every negative against Donald Trump is going to be used over the next 100 days leading up to November. They're gonna blame him for the coronavirus, they're gonna blame him for the resurgence of the pandemic, if there is one. They're going to blame him for people out of work, they're gonna blame him for literally everything to make him look terrible in the face of the election coming up in November. I, I'm appalled as to what's going on in this country, but everything has turned political, and I think all these riots, all the mobs, all the looting, all the burning, is an orchestration of events that absolutely are being geared towards hurting Donald Trump's reelection.
You know, a lot of people blaming for being, they say, lies and all these other things. I think he is just a very shrewd businessman, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, Keith, well, I'm glad, whatever the wicker bill was that caused the problem with the phone, I'm glad you had a chance to call back. Thank you, and God bless you.
I use my wife's phone.
Ah, there you go. All right, well, always go to the wife, she knows better. There you go. Thank you very much. Calls welcome, 436-22441-8669274587. Yeah, we got problems all across this country, shootings, killings, mass murders, rioting, looting, and why? Why? Because these cities, the mayors, and the town councils have lost complete control and sanity in letting the police do their job. They're not letting the police get involved and do the job of protecting the American taxpayers. Caller, I'll be right with you, I promise. I wanna remind everybody, oh my goodness, are there big fun things happening at Redder's Showcase with their big indoor tent sale? Did you hear about it? Wow, I mean, they've got some great, great deals in appliances. Listen to this, they've got an 18 cubic foot refrigerator, starting at just $5.99, and they've got a great selection of air conditioners, starting at $179, and dishwashers, starting at $3.49. 12 months, same as cash, and I'll tell you what, you better get in there and check it out today at the Redder's Showcase Indoor Tent Sale. It's running at 2611 Overland in Burley. Really, really great people with super buys for you at Redder's Showcase. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Yes, Zeb, uh, sometimes, you know, you fear for your country, you fear for the fact that you wonder if there's enough people left who care, enough people left who know better, enough people who are willing to bind the will in themselves to get off their whatever, and, and maybe put down their phone, or use it for some sort of good, because right now, I think there's times that these phones are nothing but a, a very evil distraction in some respect. So, and then there's signs that things are changing for the better. Uh, I know that for a fact that there's tons of, uh, when you talk about polls and Trump getting reelected, uh, there's tons of people that will never admit, and we've said it numerous times, that they even like Donald Trump, but, uh, they will go and vote for him. And anybody in their right mind could not vote for the other side. And, and so you say to yourself, what percentage of the people are going to vote for Trump? Well, there's gonna be more people vote for Donald J. Trump this time than the last time. So then it comes down to, and I believe that fully, and I have reasons to believe that. But then it comes down to whether or not there's voter fraud, and whether or not you have Republican, you know, committees in the counties, in the cities, who are willing to make sure that these things are done properly. You know, the Democrats are so good at being, you know, you know, they're criminals.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, instead of, wait, whoa, whoa, let me, let me jump in. Let me jump in and, and visit with you here a little bit, instead of making a one-word ramble. Uh, everything you said is true, but I've lost faith in the cohesion of keeping things honest in this country. I've lost faith in what might happen during the election. I've lost faith with the Democrats trying to push for mail-in balloting, and I'm not in any way, shape, or form ever in favor of mail-in balloting. I think it's way too easy to regulate and criminalize. And I'm really concerned. I'm not optimistic at all about the evil left and what they're gonna try to do and sway prior to November 3rd. I, I'm more concerned today than ever, after having spent the last four days talking to people all across this country, in Washington DC, uh, New York City, Florida, et cetera, and people are really concerned about the left taking over and having the evil sit in the White House after January. I'm really concerned.
Well, I think that there's people that are, that are like us across this nation. I know there's days when I really am, you know, pessimistic, but there's days when, you know, you, you just have nothing else to do left.
Well, yeah, but wait a minute, wait a minute, are you pessimistic? Are you pessimistic, Randy, or are you being realistic? There's a difference there.
Well, I'm always realistic, because there's no use telling yourself a lie.
Yeah.
But I feel, this morning, I feel very, I feel encouraged by things, and I, I think that the polls are changing and some, you know, whether or not we believe them or not, I, you know, in, in, you know, in favor of Donald Trump, and so, but they were always against him, even in the last election, and again, you know, it's just like me, I'm a outspoken conservative, you know, I'm as outspoken as, as I would like to think as anybody, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go to catch him and wear a MAGA hat.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't do it. I could handle the heat. But I would spend all day, or maybe not, but, uh, we, we wouldn't change anything. But you see, you know, the, there's people across this nation, just like me and you, who believe in Donald Trump, who would never admit it. In California, you can't say anything, you gotta be careful. Oregon, Washington, New York, wherever you are, you, you know, admitting you like Donald J. Trump is, uh, is even risky business in, in Twins.
Well, I, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at it that way at all. I'm gonna come out and state my opinion like I do every day. If that offends somebody, then I couldn't care less. They have a right for their free speech, I have a right for mine. If I wanna wear a MAGA hat, I'm gonna wear that cap I have. I am not gonna back up and hide how or who I am, and I think that's the problem today. We're afraid of confrontation, we're afraid of making sure that our voices are heard, and that's why the vocal majority has turned into the not-heard majority.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's no question about it, but, you know, politics is a pretty personal thing, and people don't really like to talk about it or share it. As long as they show up and they're informed, and they, you know, they're informed and they vote, you know, and, uh, that's the thing. I think, you know, I, I feel good about it, I just think that it has to do with however this election ends up being, and, uh, I don't, I just don't, uh, like I said, these governors and this shutdown and, and the Corona, and, you know, it, it, it leaves us in a quandary.
Well, a quandary's a good word for it, because there's another word that I wanted to use, but I can't use it on the radio. Randy, God bless you, man, thank you for your call, as always, appreciate it. Hey, don't forget, one of the great sponsors on the program that wants you to remember, go to the Minidoka County Fair, Magic Valley Carpet at 613 D Street in Rupert. They have all your flooring needs, carpet, hardwood, vinyl, laminates, tile, everything, and insulation is guaranteed, for over 36 years of experience in serving you, and they wish everybody, come on over and be a part of the Minidoka County Fair and Rodeo. Really nice people over there. Uh, caller, good morning, you're on the air, go ahead, please. Talk to me, caller, please. Evidently, we've got another phone problem there. Uh, Sean, are they there?
Maybe, but dialed. It's Keith again.
Oh, okay, then hang up on that one, if you would, please. Uh, we're gonna give away some cookies right now, and I wanna kinda get into this before I get into one of my stories that I wanna visit about this morning. And, uh, we're gonna give away cookies from Sophie's Chatterbox, over there on the Square Inn Rupert at 530 East Street. Oh, my goodness, what a restaurant, and what a delicious bakery. I mean, everything they make is first-class and delicious, cookies, pies, all the desserts, wedding cakes, you name it. And like I said, they also have that restaurant over there, you better stop in today, and if you win the cookies, please call them and let them know when you'll be by to pick them up, okay? Sophie's Chatterbox. And this is an easy one this morning, really easy. Name the real name of the actor that played Tonto on the Lone Ranger TV series. What was the actor's real name that played Tonto on the Lone Ranger TV series back in the 50s and 60s? What was his real name? Give me a call, 436-22441-8669274587, and you can win a dozen cookies to Sophie's Chatterbox. Good morning, caller, you're on the air, go ahead, please. And a dial tone comes up. Boy, it's been a fun morning so far. Uh, once again, give me a call, 436-22441-8669274587. What was the actor's real name that played Tonto on the Lone Ranger TV series? Good morning, caller, you're on the air, go ahead.
Jay Silverheels.
And what is your name?
Barbara.
Is this Barbara Knight?
Yes, sir. How are you today?
Good, you've won the cookies, thank you, Barbara, God bless you, Jay Silverheels, and he played Indians in many movies, uh, along with the Tonto character on The Lone Ranger, so he was quite an accomplished actor, and he was a full-blooded Native American, too. Barbara, God bless you, thank you.
Thank you very much, and how can I air mail those cookies over to your house?
No, no, I don't need them, believe me, I'm on a diet. You enjoy those cookies, please.
Have a wonderful day, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Barbara Knight wins the cookies, and calls are welcome, 436-22441-8669274587. This next question I'm going to ask is a little bit touchy, because there's gonna be some out in the audience that are gonna look with disdain at me for even bringing it up, but that's okay. Uh, Roger Stone was recently on a radio program, and remember Roger Stone, uh, had a 40-month prison sentence that was commuted by President Donald Trump? Well, he was on a radio program with Morris O'Kelly, a Los Angeles-based black radio host, and Roger Stone used the term, hold on, caller, I wanna get this point out, uh, Roger Stone used the term negro. Now, my question to you is, there's been a huge hullabaloo over Roger Stone saying the word negro. I want you to tell me, audience, what is wrong with the terminology in every use of the word correctly, negro or negroid, which is one of the classifications of mankind? Now, if you look up in any dictionary, you'll see that I'm correct, there are Mongoloids, Caucasoids, and Negroids. And all of a sudden, the term negro, used very properly and politely, is out of bounds, and they say that it is absolutely a slur. What are your thoughts? I disagree. I think it's used in a very polite connotation, and using it with the right, uh, use of the word, negroid or negro, Caucasoid or Caucasian, or Mongoloid. Give me your thoughts on that. Caller, go ahead, please, you're on the air.
Good morning again. You know, I, I don't think that you're wrong, I really don't, because negro, I grew up when they used to use it in a little different manner, and I don't think there was anything wrong with that, but that's been a thing of the past. But a negro is a black person, and it doesn't mean whether they're good or bad.
Well, wait a minute, there's no connotation there of good or bad. I mean, it's just a, a explanation of what that race is. It's a Negroid or Negro race, as the same as whites are considered Caucasoids or Caucasians, and people from the Asian part of the world are called Mongoloids, as making up the three groups of mankind. Are we going to get that careless, and, uh, that, um, derelict in our duty to try to remember and educate ourselves, that we're going to start eliminating words that are properly used? That's my whole point on this, if they're properly used and not used in anything as an insult, why all of a sudden is that a slur?
I don't know, but living in the community we live in, where there is a lot of Mexican people, they don't mind being called Mexicans, because that's what they are, they're from Mexico. Now, what in the world is wrong with these people when you say a word properly?
Yeah.
You don't use slang, but that's not slang, negro is not a slang.
Absolutely not, and, uh, I, I'm really, really adamant about this, that, uh, I think, I think, and I've talked to many of my Negro friends, that they don't like the terminology encompassed all around them and their race as black. They don't like that terminology.
I don't think I would either. Black is black.
Well, I mean, the Blacks did this, or the Blacks did that. You know, why in the world can't we say things as they are? I mean, if all of a sudden, somebody goes on the street corner today, in Burley or Twin Falls or whatever, and they see, uh, you, your wife, and another couple maybe, and they go, hey, there's Whitey over there, you know, and that's kind of a slang and a slur against you, but that's okay. And, and this is what I'm getting upset about, is we have to be so careful about what comes out of our mouths. If we're polite, and we use the terminology correctly as it is in any dictionary, whether it's Webster's, or the Funk and Wagner, whatever the case might be, it's all in there, I don't see why we have to be so afraid of calling things the way they are.
Let's take Obama, for instance, he at one time stated that if there was any way he could get the white blood out of his body, he would just relish to do it. Now, that is quite a statement.
Well, that's a racial statement. Well, that's a racial statement and negativity and everything else. Yeah, I, I agree with you. But I'm, I'm just fed up and sick and tired of the minute somebody says the proper connotation or terminology, automatically they're racist and automatically it's a slur. And I'm not buying into that, not at all. Keith, I appreciate your call. Thank you, my dear friend.
Yeah, just one more thing. You know, how many names does a cowboy have? You know, cow puncher and, you know, all these other things. People don't think anything of it. Why make a big deal out of something that is not a big deal?
I agree with you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your call. God bless you. Yeah, I'm, uh, I just wonder, the shoe on the other foot. I'd like some of you folks out there in the audience, though, to call me and let me know. Caller, I'll be right there. I will not keep you waiting more than thirty seconds. I wanna remind everybody about Berry Equipment and Rental, sales, service, and parts. And they've got three wonderful locations serving you at one fifty-nine West Highway Thirty in Burley, four sixty-five Addison Avenue West in Twin, and the Napa location. Let me tell you, they've got an inventory of all the Bobcats, all the shapes and sizes, all the trenchers, all the scissor lifts, all the Deuxon wheel loaders and excavators, and great financing programs and lease programs. Don't put it off for all the lift and dig and pushing and carrying that you need to get done. Berry Equipment and Rental serving you in Burley, Twin Falls, and Napa. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
I don't see anything wrong with the word negro. It's not like you're using the, uh, the slang word, the one that I will not mention.
No, and I won't let anybody mention it on my program. There's no sense to bringing up a slang connotation or a degrading connotation. But when you look in your dictionary, and Rod, I'm sure you have, uh, about the three classifications of mankind, they are there, there is nothing derogatory about it. And to use it in the proper tense, I can't see why everybody's being dragged in the mud saying it's a racial slur.
Yeah, I mean, uh, hey, it's just, uh, just what it is, you know? I mean, what's the big deal? It's, uh, now, I mean, I'm now, nowadays I find myself saying, so what do we call them today? Negro, black, African-American, what do we call them today?
Why don't we just call them people? People. And I'm sick and tired of the color connotations. I, I mean, I've got friends from every background, every race, and I'm proud to say they are my friends. I don't look at their skin and say brown, yellow, black, white, whatever. I couldn't care less. Uh, I look at people for the way they treat me and the way I try to treat them and become friends. And I don't see any reason why we have to have a color-coded society.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, uh, we should really see everyone as just one race, the race of mankind.
There is the best way to put it. Rodney, thank you very much for calling in. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. And I will see you on Thursday.
All right, buddy. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, this, this touchy-feely society of, oh, you said the word negro. Oh, you said the word Mongoloid. Oh, you said that they were part of the three classifications of mankind. That's all true. That's all true. And yet we have to be so careful because we don't wanna have the racial slur thrown at us. I think we went through our little discussion here in the last ten minutes, handled it very well. It's up to you. You wanna call certain people a group or whatever? That's fine. You go ahead. I'm gonna refer to the three classifications of mankind as they are. Negroid, Caucasoid, and Mongoloid. And that is a fact. That's not being racist, that's being a fact. Calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Hi, Zeb. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned, no matter who we are, no matter what color we are, we are all children of God.
Amen. Made in His image.
That's right.
And don't you get a little sick and tired like I do of the color connotation or the race of people? I mean, let's just, I, I've had enough of it.
We're all people.
Yeah.
It don't make any difference what color we are. I'm part Indian. And yet, I'm a person.
Well, absolutely.
The negroes, the black people, negro means black, but we're all people. We're a person. And it's just ridiculous that they drive it into the mud like they do.
Well, and every day, I mean, I'm looking at this thing, uh, oh, my goodness, so-and-so said the word negro on a radio program. So-and-so said the word negroid on a television show. Why they can't do that? That's a racial slur. No, it's not a racial slur.
It's not. It's simply a, a description. It's not necessary. It's, they're people.
Absolutely. Absolutely. God bless you and your call this morning. I, I just really appreciated that. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Have a nice day. You know, I said earlier, and I'm gonna stand behind this, I've been to Portland, I don't know how many, hundreds and hundreds of times. And for this mayor up there in Portland, Ted Wheeler, he's got to be completely nuts. This guy should be removed from office after allowing fifty-three days and nights of rioting in his city. And then turning around and trying to thrust the blame on the Trump administration. This is insanity. Caller, good morning, you're on the air. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Mr. Bell. I'm going to agree with your, uh, the lady that was just on with you. We all are children of God. We all bleed red.
Amen.
I'm sick and tired of all this crap. Um, I don't remember in my short span of lifetime on this earth, I do not remember ever such disarray, such, uh, violence, such hatred for our fellow man. Um, you know, I'm just, I'm sick of it. President Trump is doing an awesome job in Portland and Seattle. And you know, they're trying to get a restraining order to get the, the, uh, guard out of there so they can continue destroying people in their lives.
Yeah, wait a minute, Donna. If you were a business owner, a store owner, or a property owner, let's use Portland as an example, and for fifty-three nights, there has been the looting and the burning and the baseball bats that are breaking windows, which have been brought in by cars and passed out. And, and there's been the looting and everything else. The ridiculousness of being a mayor of a town and sitting back and saying, oh, well, boys and girls will be boys and girls. That's asinine and stupid and the mayor should be run out of town on a rail.
Oh, I totally agree. Um, they're taking over police stations and, uh, union stations and trying to attack people. Um, that's not protesting, that's just pure evil violence.
Yeah, and why do you think, why do you think, Donna, that it's happening now? Why do you think that this is a full-court press to hurt the Trump administration going into the last three months prior to the election? Everything is so well orchestrated. I mean, they found out that in Seattle, as a matter of fact, last night, that a car drove up and started passing out baseball bats and giving them all the weapons. I mean, this is orchestrated and paid for. And all this insurrection, they aim at hurting Donald Trump.
Well, that you hit, you hit the nail right on the head. Um, they do not want him reelected. Uh, they want, they're doing everything they possibly can to hurt his reelection.
Yeah, and I-
The only thing I pray for is that people wake up before it's too late. And most people that say they don't like Trump, they're not gonna vote for Trump. I'm, I'm hoping that they change their mind and vote for Trump.
What are you hearing in your circle of friends and people that you associate with? Are you hearing good, bad, or ugly? I mean, what kind of a response are giving, are people giving you?
Well, I've got some Democratic friends and, you know, it, it's in both parties, Zeb. It's not just Democratic, it's not just Republican. It's both parties have, uh, people that are trying to disrupt the whole nation. Um, I'm hearing some of my liberal friends that have, for the first time in their life, they're gonna vote Republican.
I, my fear, Donna, and you and I and George and Deanne, we've known each other for a long time. I am really starting to be tentative about how this election is going to be handled. I'm starting to hear rumbles and rumors about, oh, the Democrats want more mail-in votes, they want this, they want that. I'm wondering how secure, that's the word I'm gonna use, how secure our balloting and our counting of our ballots is going to be in November.
Well, if we, if, if they do allow the mail-in votes, uh, or voting by mail, um, ugh, I'm afraid, I'm afraid of what's gonna happen.
I am too. I really am. God bless you.
You know, I, I always tell, you know, people that, that I talk to, you know, we can't go to the ballot, the ballot box to vote, but they can stand out there on the corner and tear somebody's head off or shoot their, their dog and rape their wives, um, and, and gather in, in mobs.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can't go to the voting ballot.
You know, and, and explain that to me quickly. I'm, I'm running late. I gotta get a weather forecast on, but I am in favor, and I'm gonna come out and say this, and, and the devil be damned, if they wanna call me and chew me out, fine. I am in favor of you only show up at the polls on election day to have your vote count. I don't want any pre-voting, I don't want any mail-in voting, I don't want anything but on election day only. That's my feeling.
Well, I'm right there with you. I think that's ridiculous. Um, and, and they're doing all of this because, and, and allowing all these illegals and these protesters to do what they're doing because that's the only way they can get the vote. That's the only way they can, they can possibly win the election and God forbid if they do.
Oh, my goodness, let's not even, I don't even wanna contemplate all the negatives. Uh, we're gonna be talking about that all week with my guests anyway. I have no idea where that music's coming from. Hey, Sean? Where'd that come from?
Just the normal hack, you know?
I'll tell you what, I'd like to find out who's doing that. And I guarantee you, I would punch them right in the nose. This is getting a little old. Donna, thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I, I don't know where that hacking is coming in and why, but I'm frustrated. I'm not paying money to have my program hacked. Let's go to the weather forecast right now. And the weather brought to you by our friends at Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. And they're located right behind the Minnokah Hospital across from the emergency room. And whoever's hacking may need that service. The number is three one two zero nine five seven. That number again, three one two zero nine five seven for the best of treatment for your hearing health. If you've noticed the diminishment in your hearing, please get ahold of them today. The lovely doctor pickup and the staff serving you at Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. Right now, here's Gina with the weather.
Warmer temperatures continue for the rest of this week and maybe some thunderstorm action by middle of the week. Here's your weather forecast, sunny skies today. We are expecting a high of ninety, nice and clear for this evening with a low of fifty-six for tomorrow. Sunny skies, high of ninety-three, mostly clear and sixty-two for Tuesday night. By Wednesday, we do have a slight chance of rain showers, thunderstorms in the late afternoon, partly sunny skies. It'll be muggy, high of ninety-one, twenty percent chance of showers and thunderstorms before midnight, mostly cloudy and a low of sixty. Thursday, pretty much the same with a high of ninety. That's what gets your weather for Zeb and Grant.
Thank you very much. And the weather brought to you by Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. As I said, right behind the Minnokah Hospital. And the number to call, three one two zero nine five seven. They provide expert diagnostic testing combined with the best technology for your hearing health. All right, calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Give me a call. Like to hear from you on the landline. Some of the California Teachers Union officials have been coming out with a very defiant statement over the last couple of days. And at ten oh six this morning, we're gonna be talking to the Cache County Schools Communications Officer and a lady that I have the deepest respect for, and that's Debbie Critfield. But the California Teachers Union is saying, we won't teach. Listen to this. This is really spooky to me. We won't teach until police are defunded. I heard this remark last Friday afternoon on the news. And with this kind of power and this kind of influence and the California Teachers Union coming out and saying, we won't teach until police are defunded and Medicare for all? That's, that's the most insane thing that I've heard in a long time coming from a teachers' union. Teachers. Teachers that are molding and shaping the minds of our youngsters. We won't teach until police are defunded? My goodness, look across the board at the problems that are going on in this nation because of the cutbacks to our police. Our safety and security is being diminished and you've got some idiots, and they are, with the California Teachers Union coming out and saying, we're not gonna teach until police are defunded? I've never heard of anything so insane in all my life. What are your thoughts on this? Calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. I mean, the lunacy that's going on, uh, regarding the pandemic and the coronavirus and the wearing of masks and the staying home and, oh, my goodness, we gotta crawl into a bubble and just pull our little blankie in after us. It's gone beyond insanity. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, sir. Yeah, the teachers' union down there, they don't give a hoot about the children. They, all they care about is their money coming in supporting the Democrat candidates that will keep their money coming into them and keep the kids in the schools where they teach. Just like that saying you said this morning, when you send the kids to Caesar, don't, don't be surprised when they come back roamed.
Amen. Yeah. You know, I, I, I just absolutely am so mad this morning over the circumstances of, uh, whether the kids should go back to school or not. Yes, the kids need to go back to school. We are absolutely letting this pandemic, and I use that term loosely in some regard, control our lives and destroy our lives. And our kids right now are on the verge of destruction.
Yes. And look at the timing when it come out. When the pandemic come out, it was after they had to have the impeachment of President Trump. They had the vote on it. And then they knew they couldn't go anywhere with that. So I, I personally, and I beg somebody to, or dare somebody to give me some information that'll tell me different, that this was planned.
Well, when you look at going all the way back prior to Trump's, uh, running for the presidency and he was considering throwing his hat in the ring, all the Russian probe and the collusion and the, uh, absolutely, and they were too graphic to talk about, some of the liaisons that were supposed to have happened with Trump and other members of his administration and family. And, and then it goes into the hearings and then the impeachment. And when that didn't work, Adam Schiff and the Democrats, they had to come up with another plan and it was almost like chapter four, let's turn on now the coronavirus and make everything negative. I mean, and then with the Antifa and the Black Lives Matter and the destruction and the mob rule in our streets, my goodness, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out somebody's controlling this.
Exactly. They cannot beat him on policies, they cannot beat him on the economy. So the only way that they can defeat him is take down the economy and cause chaos to make him look bad.
Amen.
They all blame President Trump for all of this that's going on, and he's only been in the office for right at three years.
Yeah, and we've got, uh, I've gotta run to the news right now. We got a little fuzz on the line, Doug and I. Appreciate your call. God bless you, man. Thank you so much.
Let's do what we can for senior senators.
I appreciate it. And how true that is. I wanna get this on real quick. Our, of course, major sponsor here, Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you with the best of summer travel tires. Gonna go see Aunt Martha and Uncle Fred? Well, by gully down in New Mexico or wherever, you better make sure you got the best of tires for your cars, pickups, SUVs, horse trailers, boat trailers, whatever. These folks at all seven locations of your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, they know tires. They know the best in brake service, front end alignment, shocks and struts, batteries, all of this and more. And above all, you're gonna be impressed with the service. They just come at a high lope out the door. May we help you? Absolutely. James and Buell, Dan on Poline and Twin Falls, Lane in Rupert, Mike and Jerome, Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin Falls, the Twist Family and Paul- Falls, the Twist Family and Paul, nice, nice people, Trent on Overland in Burley, the seven locations of Your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers. We're gonna take a little break and come back with Rick Manning right after the news. I'll see you in about seven minutes. Well, good morning, good morning. On a Monday, July twentieth, July twentieth already, just think about that. Holy smokes, the days are rapidly, they're gone. And, uh, good morning with our major sponsor, Your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you with the very safe, clean environment and the best in tires. And also our friends at Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at twelve sixty-three Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley, helping you get back to being you. Right now, let's have this good word for our friends at Western Waste. Uh, thank you very much, Western Waste Services, and you know, the truth is, they are there to serve you, and serve they do. We've been with them on the route service of picking up our garbage every week for a long, long time, and I urge you to do the same and find out about it, and, uh, put on the route service, and they'll get rid of your trash. It's as simple as that. Call them at seven three four six nine six nine. That number again, seven three four six nine six nine. Western Waste Services, always, always at your disposal. Give them a call today. By the way, this afternoon, I'm gonna be heading back down to Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at twelve sixty-three Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley, with Nick Greenwell and all the physical therapists. Oh, yeah, they got some more work to do on my knee and on my leg, and I'll tell you what, they do a fantastic job. If you're recuperating from surgery or an accident, and you've got the aches and the pains, you better let them help you, and help they will. Call them, make an appointment, six seven eight one one nine one, six seven eight one one nine one, the best. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, twelve sixty-three Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley, serving you. Momentarily, we're gonna go to the phone line and have my dear friend Rick Manning on the program, but quickly, I wanna remind you too about Hanson Mortuary at seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert. Yes, they are there to help you and your family in a very tumultuous time of need after the passing of a loved one, and they always, always hold the highest ethical standards with unquestioned integrity in serving you and the entire family. So please remember the name, Hanson Mortuary. Remember the number, four three six five six three six. That number again, four three six five six three six. Joel Hewer, family and staff at Hanson Mortuary. And Joel also serving you and your family at Morrison Payne Funeral Home on East Main in Burley. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, dear, dear friend, the President of Americans for Limited Government and, uh, co-author of the book Necessary Noise, and here he is again on a Monday morning, Rick Manning. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Hey, Zeb, how are you?
Well, I'm very, very nervous, and I want you to chime in on this with me. Uh, every day that goes by, we're seeing more sleaze, more slime, more erosion of our society. Fifty-three straight nights of damage, mob rule, looting and burning in Portland. Seattle had more violence last night. Chicago, almost sixty more people shot this weekend. Uh, shootings in New York, all over the country, and I'm just gonna say this, and you can correct me if you wish, I think this is all a huge orchestration, all a orchestration to not get the reelection of Donald Trump. What are your thoughts?
Well, I think your conclusion is correct. Um, it is a, here's what the Chinese and, who are funding a lot of this stuff, um, and the, and the hard left sources and the law, here's their endgame. They're attempting to create so much disruption that the average American, who doesn't pay that close attention, they just know that a bunch of stuff's going on, they don't like it, do, do the answer to be, gee, if we could just go back to the good old days when we were just giving our way freedom quietly, um, under Obama, that would be a good thing. So they are going to try to sell Joe Biden the, as the guy who's going to calm the storm because he won't be ruffling feathers, and will essentially be acquiescing to the demands of those who are burning our cities. Now, you and I know that you acquiesce to demands of those who burn the cities, they continue to burn cities until they get more and more and more, and you never, you never can give them enough. You can't pay an extortionist and not expect them to continue to extort, and since what they're trying to extort from the country is our basic freedom, um, it becomes, it's a non-negotiable, but the, but the goal of the left is to, is to create enough turmoil and turn everything on its head, where the federal government went in to try to protect the federal property and arrested a bunch of Antifa people in Portland, who've been rioting for six weeks unabated by the mayor or the, or the police officers in town. Um, federal government goes in, takes steps, takes steps to arrest some of the leaders of that, and suddenly, it's a Gestapo state. Although, it isn't. It's, people, Americans deserve to have their civil liberties protected, and it's a, it's a travesty that we're seeing state and local governments refuse to follow basic law.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a, and so, yeah, there is a, people in the city of Portland have a, a right to their property, they have a right to their, uh, to their constitutional freedoms, and if the state and local government will not protect them, then in some instances, the federal government has to take action, and it will be, and we're seeing, we're gonna see this, we saw it in Denver this weekend, where Michelle Malkin, uh, had a pro-police rally that ended up getting busted up by Antifa people. The police were standing there, um, and watched as the Antifa people attacked the speakers onstage. A gentleman was praying, a veteran was praying for the country, and was beaten with a bullhorn, um, as he got done praying for the country by Antifa people. So what we have is a concerted effort to attack and silence the right by those who are radicals at, by any, by any measure, and it isn't, and it's, and so what do you do about it? Well, what you do is you say, we, we have to let our neighbors know that this is unacceptable, and we cannot bow to the left. We cannot take a knee to the left. We take a knee, they will, they will, they will beat us about the head and ears, and we'll never get up.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's just be, and I'm being kind when I say that. Um, so ultimately, you know, it's, I, I, I hesitate taking the next step in terms of fighting back, and here's why. There is, that's what the Chinese want. The Chinese want hand-to-hand combat on the streets of America, because they control ninety-five percent of media. The Silicon Valley Boys and the, and the five big owners of, uh, of media control about ninety-five percent of the information flows in the filters, and any, any fighting back ends up being perceived as, oh, suddenly you're the Boo Boo Boys, the Proud Boys, you're, you're something that you're demonized as being, oh, the Nazis are coming out to, to try to hurt these poor protesters, and it ends up doing more harm than good. And so what is my answer? My answer is a biblical answer, and, and that's what Jesus said, and, and at least through this election, turn the other cheek and be bigger than they are. And that means, and that's harder, much harder. Um, I, I, but there's a reason why Jesus said that, and in this circumstance, it is exactly the only, besides hiring your own security for events, it's the only thing that can be done that casts the other side as the aggressor, because we know, anybody's watched football, okay, professional football, um, which I won't do anymore, but in the past, when I used to watch professional football, what we knew is, somebody would take a shot at a defensive back, a wide receiver would throw a punch. The defensive back would punch the wide receiver back, and a flag would get drawn on the defensive back. If you punched somebody back, the flag will never get thrown on the person you punched, punched you first. So particularly when the, when the referees are on the other side. So given that, it's a, we aren't at the stage where, where, you know, tit-for-tat should exist. We need to be, uh, fighting for the country by being, um, Christian examples, and, and then we need to vote, we need to get everybody we know to vote, and we need to get people we don't know to vote. We're sick of this violence and want it stopped, and they want us, and they know that the only way to stop it is by standing up to it rather than kneeling to it.
Let me ask you this though, Rick, and you and I have both talked on and off the air about, uh, Christianity, both of us Christians.
Right.
And have a deep faith, but I guess I'm kinda like Peter in the Bible. Uh, he was the one that was kinda the most raucous and, uh, wanted to go out and, and kinda just go ahead and punch somebody in the nose. Uh, you know, how do we take this? I mean, how long can we take this without fighting back? I mean, the sleaze and the slime out there that's trying to destroy the election, we have a lot of doubts as to what the left is gonna do in regards to the validity of ballots. Uh, they're pushing for mail-in ballots, they're really pushing for control of the election, and that worries me. We've got to stand up, and people just can't be milquetoast.
No, it worries me too. I, I agree with you. There's, they, they've corrupted everything. I, I said this back eight, you know, five years ago, I say Obama's corrupted everything, and he did, and they're attempting to, they're now attempting to corrupt the, um, to absolutely corrupt the voting system. It's already, uh, somewhat corrupted, um, by lack of any voter identification requirements in many states, but it is a, and ballot harvesting in California. But it is a, how, let me answer that question with a personal blight I faced. I went to Star Parker Cure, who's with Cure, she's a friend of mine, co-author of the book with me. She had a, an event in DC in front of the emancipation statue, and I, and I went to that event with full expectation that I was going to be in conflict with a bunch of black, black-suited thugs. I, I, that was my expectation. Um, and it was, unfortunately, that didn't occur, but I had made, I don't know what happens when somebody actually hits me, okay, because I've got red hair and I have a temper, and it's hard to control at times. But the, but I made up my mind going in that now is a time for, for us to exhibit the qualities of Christ, and it's hard, it's much harder, it's much harder to do that than anything else. Now, I will tell you where the line is drawn. If somebody hits me, I can turn the other cheek, but if they attack my family, if they attack my friends, if they attack, um, my loved ones, it, there is, at that point, there is no more turning the other cheek, and it's a, and it becomes a, and at that point, I have a responsibility to defend my family, defend my property, and it's a, and defend my loved ones, and that's a, so that's where I draw the line. Um, I can put up with anything, but I will not put, that's done to me, but I cannot put up with anything that's done to my, to my loved ones.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in admiration of what you just said, because I don't think I could be, nor have I been in the past, that cool, but I think that today, looking at the situation of the mob rule and chaotic, uh, happenings, and people demanding, and people stealing, and people burning, and people hurting other people, that you have to assert some force to get back to a civilized society. We are on the brink of letting these chaotic people take over and just destroy the whole fabric of values in the United States.
I, I agree with that, and it's a, um, the, the challenge here, and this is why I agree with President Trump's decision to send the Department of Homeland Security people into Portland and start arresting these, these thugs and their leaders. That's necessary. That's the role of the state. That's what we pay taxes for, is for the law to be enforced, and the people in Portland pay federal taxes, they pay state taxes, they pay local taxes, and their state and local tax dollars have gone, have not gone, uh, been used to enforce the law. In fact, they've been used to ignore the law, and leaving those, those business owners and others, um, in a position where they are, they are vulnerable, and they're having to pay tribute to, um, the crazies of the left in order to avoid being, uh, having their businesses destroyed. The, the federal government through, through Donald Trump has finally said, you know, I've had, we've had enough, we've allowed you to let this occur for six weeks, you've had no, you haven't done anything to stop it, so now we're going to protect the individual rights of, of those Americans who live there. And that is, and so they're rounding up the, the black-suited thugs, and that is a, uh, in my estimation, the role of government. You know, we, we have consent to the governed, and we, we kind of have a social contract that we say, we'll pay our taxes, um, and, you know, the one thing government is supposed to do, and it's always historically done, all the way back to the feudal times, when the serfs would sit there and work the fields, and they, and, but the agreement was, when rotters came, the, the king, the duke, or whoever was in, behind the castle walls, would bring the serfs in behind the, in, behind the castle walls, and would defend the lives of their people, their so-called subjects. So this isn't a new concept, this is a historically valid concept for thousands of years, and what's not valid is when the, when the people who are elected choose to allow, allow their round shirts to go out and attack their own citizens.
Mm-hmm.
And who are following the law, and when the governed become, when the governors become, uh, uh, become the actual, um, thugs, that's when, you know, that's the recipe for, um, as Thomas Jefferson might say, it's a recipe for revolution. Um, I am not willing to go that step at this point, because I know that's what the Chinese want. Um, let me give people something they can do, specifically about the, let's deal with this on two levels. We have the, what's happening on the streets, okay? That's a, that's one level, but we have the, we have the bigger funding level that's going on, the internet, the kind of the, the world, global play that's happening, and we know the Chinese are, are helping, uh, fund and orchestrate what's happening. That's pretty clear. So, what do you do about it? Well, I'll tell you what you can do in Idaho right now. You call the governor, who I saw, I didn't meet, I didn't go up and meet him, I had to talk to the Labor Secretary, but I saw him on Wednesday at the White House, um, talking about deregulation, seems like a good guy. You need to call your governor and tell him to take a look at every single, every single investment the state has, and ensure, including the public employee funds, pension funds, and ensure that those monies are not being invested in China, okay? We need to decapitalize China, and that is something that can be done right now. I'm sending a letter to your governor, to Governor Little, today, along with forty-nine other governors, but today, I'm sending him a letter that urges him to decapitalize China, to totally divest from China, because every single dollar we send to China capitalizes them. They don't have, we're not buying companies in China, we're basically buying, sending money, and the Chinese government then decides if there's gonna be a payout or not. It has nothing to do with profit and loss, uh, statements. What's more, there's no auditing of anything in China, so it's unsafe investment, because they don't even know what the, you can't even get an audit, so there's no way you, you know what the actual bottom line on these companies are. So legally, because there's no audit trail, you have a fiduciary responsibility to divest from China, but morally, you have a, you have a responsibility to divest from China, because every time my money, and a pension fund that, you know, supports me, I'm not that I have a pension fund right now, but if I, if I did, every pension dollar, if those monies are invested in Chinese companies- but if I, if I did, every pension dollar, if those monies are invested in Chinese companies, and I guarantee you that those monies are invested in Chinese companies that are running slaves, using child labor, um, and effectively, what they are doing is they are making each and every one of the slave owners, and that's repugnant. So tell Brad Little, tell your governor, get us out of China. No more, no Idaho investments in China. That's something that somebody can do at the state level. And make a stand at the macro level, at the big picture level, um, the underlying, the people who are the underlying haters and supporters of the, uh, of the Antifa thugs on the streets, we have to stop capitalizing those who would destroy us. And then we can deal with, once we've done that, we have to co, deal with the thugs on the street also. But that's a function of, of enforcing the laws, and, and basically saying to states and localities, if you're not willing to enforce the, the laws, then we're not gonna give you any money. And the federal government can say to them, we're cutting you off on all funds if you're not enforcing the laws, and, and essentially, end, and, and the, the financing of anarchy, which is what's happening, um, were happening in Portland, and besides in Seattle. The Chicago thing is different, because Chicago always has sixty shootings a, a weekend, and unfortunately, and, you know, five to ten, to five to fifteen, uh, people killed on the streets of Chicago, because Chicago's a, um, essentially has turned their streets over to the thugs, and they have for a long time. Um, but that's a, so it's really not the same as what's happening in Portland, and, uh, Portland and Seattle, or Denver for that matter.
Absolutely. You know, I wished we had more time. I say that every week, and it's always so informative and interesting to have you on the program. Ladies and gentlemen, the President of Americans for Limited Government, and of course, a great author, great spokesperson, political analyst, Rick Manning. God bless you, sir, and thank you so much for being on the program this morning.
God, God bless you, Zeb, and everybody, get on your knees and pray for this country. You know, God's in control, we just need to lift it up to Him. Get on your knees and pray, because we need it.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, my dear friend. Appreciate it. Rick Manning, and he's here every Monday at nine oh six. Uh, we've had some complaints phoned in, and I, I think that Sean's doing all he can. We've had some bleedovers, some voices in the background, and some fuzz, and some other stuff on the line. And I can't control it over here. I've had some calls come into my studio here, and, uh, we'll do the best we can. I don't understand what's going on, but Sean's on top of it, and he'll let us know. I want to remind everybody about Denny's Restaurant, and that's of course, at 611 North Overland in Burley. Oh my goodness, America's diner. Mm-hmm. Great, great food, really, really nice people. And we're going to be over there on this Thursday at 11:30 for Zeb's Lunch Bunch. All the delicious menu choices, breakfast, lunch, dinner, anytime, all the time. And like I say, wow, what a dessert lineup for you at Denny's Restaurant. You know, every time you go in there, you're always gonna find something different and tasty that you're gonna go, wow, that's my favorite. Well, then the next week, you're gonna have another favorite. That's the great eating at Denny's Restaurant, 611 North Overland in Burley, and another location at 291 Pole Line Road in Twin Falls. Denny's Restaurant, America's Diner. Want to also remind you too about our friends at Let's Ride. Oh my goodness sakes, they do a wonderful job in selling fun. That's right. This is where the fun is sold at Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the World, and their hours are Monday through Friday, nine to six, Saturdays nine to two. Don't forget, they've got all the side-by-sides, they got all the four-wheelers, they've got all the accessories, and above all, they've got a super service department to keep you running. I urge you to get over there today. 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the World, Let's Ride, where the fun is sold. Really, really good people. And in that area, you're gonna find our friends at Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert, just on the curve as you're going into Rupert. Don't forget, Cameron and Siemens Insurance with the best of life insurance, health insurance, retirement planning, employee benefits, all of this and so much more for you, your family, and your business. Todd and the rest of the outfit, they really care, they're devoted to serving you, and they're very accessible. So the main thing you need to do is just pick up the telephone and make the call. Making a call for an appointment today at 436-4424. That number again, 436-4424. Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert. Well, ladies and gentlemen, right now, we're gonna go back to the phone line, and a friend of mine that has been on this program numerous times, back on the air this morning, and that's attorney and political analyst James Hurson from California. James, good morning, sir. How are you?
Oh, I'm doing fine, you know, considering that California is now caught in a sequel, um, the lockdown two, and, uh, brought to us, to us by Chairman Newsom. Um, so, you know, after he had a mandatory mask order, and then he banned singing in churches, uh, now he's decided to do everything he can to permanently harm the United States economy, particularly California's economy, but it's gonna harm the US economy and affect the election as he hopes.
Have you ever in your lifetime seen anything as orchestrated and well-concentrated as this movement to hurt the Trump reelection, and basically stymie the thought of the American people? I've never seen anything like this.
No, I, and virtually everybody I had talked to says the same thing. This is unprecedented. The time we live in is unprecedented. It's not just that it's orchestrated, because we've seen orchestrated stunts before. As a matter of fact, there's a tradition called the October Surprise. Uh, I can't imagine what it would be this year. Uh, I can't think of anything that would, uh, surprise us now. But we've seen manipulations, we've seen media planted stories, uh, various techniques. But what we've never seen before is that a political party would harm citizens, harm the America's image in the world to a, a very, very dangerous level, uh, harm the economy, take away people's dreams, and do all this for political purposes. And that truly is what is happening. And it's not a conspiracy theory, because if we just look at the mayors and governors, just look at those blue state governors and blue city mayors, they intentionally allowed crime to take place, they released criminals out of prisons, and they, in many cases, participated in demonizing, taking away funds from police, and even, in the case of the city of Minneapolis, abolishing their police while the citizens are experiencing this kind of crime. We've never seen anything like that. These are people that have not just breached their obligations as, um, political leaders, they are responsible. They are, and I, I would say in some cases, criminally so.
You know, James, you've been on my program a lot, and I've always considered you a really straight shooter, and you are. And when I, over the weekend, heard about the California Teachers Union coming out and saying with a very defiant statement, "We won't teach until the police are defunded," I about fell out of my chair when I heard that.
Well, you know what I like about that is, and it's very appropriate to say this in our time, they took their masks off. The California Teachers Association, the various, uh, pieces of the National, um, Teachers Association, has no concern or care about children, has no concern or care about education. They are in fact Antifa in different clothing. They are far-left wing radicals. Actually, their number one concern, of course, is the salary of the leaders of the unions and their war chest, their political war chest. They extract dues from their members. But it's very clear, um, when the Association of Pediatric Physicians comes out and says, "It's dangerous for our children to close the schools." When we have a statistic in California where the nine million schoolchildren below eighteen, in the entire year of 2020 so far, has zero deaths from COVID-19. I'll say that again, zero. That's nine million, and they have zero deaths. And every competent study shows that this particular virus is almost no risk to children. And, and there's a very rare risk of any transfer of virus. When you put all that together, you know that the closing of the schools is a stunt. And here in California, Gavin Newsom illicitly, illegally shut down not only the public schools, but all the private schools. And as a matter of fact, the, um, Los Angeles Teachers Union added a demand to defund the police. They said, they demanded to get rid of charter schools. Now, in urban areas, parents want their children to go to charter schools so much, they'll enter a freaking lottery. They actually have lotteries because it's so popular. Why would, uh, teachers want to abolish charter schools? Because of power. Because the Teachers Union wants a monopoly. They don't want parents to have a chance to save their children from the death pool that urban public education has become. And so they're obviously scared to death of the issue of school choice, where parents get vouchers and are allowed to choose. Uh, they don't want parents' right to choose. And so it's, uh, it's just part of their unmasking, and this whole thing of closing the schools is part of the election year stunting. And if the Democrat Party doesn't have a reckoning in November, I think that the, the standard of living in America, um, what's left of our freedom, uh, our entire heritage and tradition will be gone.
Yeah. James, right now, this morning, on this July 20th, and we'll take that call in just a moment, standby caller, how concerned are you as compared to previous interviews that you and I have had together on this program about the election? I, I'm more concerned today, and I'll be very honest with you, I'm more concerned today about the possibility of Biden and the Democrats and this very evil turn in our society may take over this election, more so than the winning of Donald Trump. What are your thoughts?
Well, my concern is not for a, if there's a legitimate election, Donald Trump will win. My concern is that we have now people that have shown that they are willing to cheat. They have cheated in their case counts of COVID-19, they've cheated in the death counts of COVID-19. And these are people in the public health bureaucracy, many of whom have been caught cheating. Um, people who are giving probability tests, uh, without actual scientific tests, uh, death counts where people have motorcycle accidents and are called COVID deaths. These are people who are willing to do anything. And the call for mail-in voting is a call to end elections in America. Mail-in voting means no legitimate election. I live in California, a state where they created a new term called ballot harvesting. Ballot harvesting means the end of legitimate elections. It means that you go to bed on Election Day Eve with a candidate having determined to have won, and you wake up in the morning and there's a different result. And that happened in a, in a large group of house races in California, uh, with ballot harvesting, which essentially allows someone to be paid to go out and collect fake ballots, where there's no one checking on it. And when you have mail-in ballot, balloting as opposed to absentee balloting, a Democratic machine will be allowed to just run amok. I was born in Chicago, I came from Illinois where dead people voted, and there's a long history of this kind of thing. And it's almost, not 100%, because nothing's 100%, but almost exclusively the Democrat Party that does this. And they perfected it to a very high level, because they have the motor voter bills that encourage people who are in the country illegally to register, and then they encourage people who are in the country illegally to vote, which is why the Democrat Party is so adamant about tearing down any border security and having open borders.
Absolutely. We have a caller with a quick question or comment. Caller, please, you're on the air. Go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, well, I wonder, you know, you're in the hotbed of liberalism. Is there any signs of life on the right hand? The Republicans, will they be able to, you know, in each precinct, will the Republicans have enough will to make sure that things, i- i- if at all possible, that things will be legitimate in the election? Is, is there signs of life in California that somebody might actually decide that voting Democrat is, is killing them? Or is it just so down the road that California will be lost until Christ comes? I'll hang up.
Respond to the caller, please, James, if you would.
Sure, there are signs of life. And we saw a phenomenon happen in the 1990s. We saw New York City, which was a Democrat stronghold, but there was chaos in the streets, and the people of New York chose someone who was a Ronald Reagan-appointed US attorney named Rudy Giuliani. And he shocked the world. And, and most recently in California, we had a special election in the 25th district, which is in Los Angeles, which is another Democrat stronghold. And a guy named Mike Garcia, a Republican, won the special election despite the attempt to cheat, because the margin was so wide. And yes, yes, Virginia, there is life in California. There's also people, it reminds me of the Tea Party, they're coming out on the street corners, ordinary people, working people, and their kids with signs. And the signs say, reopen the schools, Newsom. And because they know what a, what a sham closing the schools is, what an overly broad power play and draconian approach it is. So yeah, there's life here. The problem is, and it's a simple statement that you really can't make in the mainstream media, California outsourced the vote. They took away citizens' votes and gave them to people that are here illegally. And when they get enough of them, they consolidate their power, and the elections are predetermined. And that is the future of America if, if the Democrats get power. And somehow, we have to spread that message across this country, and we can start with the people we know, with our friends, with our family. Tell them the importance of everyone, no exception, everyone coming out in November and voting. And if you don't like this guy's hair, the president, you don't like his tweets, you get clothespins and hold your nose, because the alternative is not a real candidate. He is an avatar, a meat puppet being controlled by others. Now, and we don't even know exactly who the other people are. And I'm talking about Biden, who put two sentences together, who has lost the use of his brain cells, but he's Who has lost the use of his brain cells, but he's being used as a meat puppet. And so we got it, we, we cannot, that alternative we now see on our television screen in the streets of Seattle and Portland. That is not an America that any of us want to live in.
James, in every election, and I don't need to tell you this, you're the expert, but in every election, every year or every four years, there's going to be some key words or phrases that keep cropping up. And one of the words that really scares me on behalf of the Democrats used by Biden and of course Bernie Sanders, and especially the nitwit Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, transform America. The word transform. What do you hear when you hear that word transform and what do you think it really means?
It's a word that has been used in, uh, the academic world. And what is, is you, the people that use it are people that follow the teachings of the original founding fathers of communism. That's Marx, Trotsky, and Lenin. And what they mean by transformation is to get rid of what they see is the systemic, remember this word being used all the time, systemic problems in our country. Means that it's embedded, and what that means is the system must be destroyed, torn down and replaced. And what it will be, be replaced with is a form of socialism, which is really sort of a benevolent communism. And it means the destruction of rights, of the Constitution, of private property, of sovereignty, a whole, I mean, really serious things that are torn down to make room for what these people think is an engineered utopia and created by man. And the founding fathers of this country understood that those kinds of utopian ideas are dangerous because they're not possible. They go against human nature. They go against our understanding of the human condition. And so, um, it's what C.S. Lewis said, uh, the most dangerous kind of person is someone from the government estate that says that they're here to help you.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. We have another caller with a quick question. I've got two minutes left. Caller, good morning, quickly. All right, thank you, Sean. Uh, final thought, James, uh, as you look at the election and the impending polls that are showing, uh, in some cases Biden up by 12 or 13% and the man is not coming out of the basement, he's very incoherent. I watched him on television last week, very shaky and unstable. Uh, where, where, where are all these puppetry movements coming from? Who do you think really is in charge of Biden and this Democratic campaign?
Well, first you asked about, you know, the polls being up by 12 or 15 or this, as Yoki Beara said, it's deja vu all over the, all over again, even more so. Because in 2016, there was a 100% certainty that Hillary Clinton was going to win up until Election Eve. And when people are watching individuals who are Trump supporters being beaten, when they're watching, uh, property being destroyed, businesses being destroyed, they're not about to answer a pollster who calls on the telephone. So there's uncounted Trump votes. As to who's controlling Biden, the best evidence we have now is a document created by the Biden campaign. They call it a unity document where they have actually co-opted all of the insane policies of the Bernie Sanders campaign. And they've appointed Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, a chairman of their Energy and Environment Committee. And co-opted many aspects of the New Green Deal. They're trying to make it sound different than it is, like that issue recently with Chris Wallace and the president, whether or not Biden is for defunding the police. The answer is the president was right. Biden is for defunding the police. What he says, he's reallocating the police resources. Well, if I say to an employee, we're reallocating your salary, that means you're getting a cut in pay and the police are getting defunded if it's reallocated. So they use the language like that. But in the end, Bernie Sanders is saying, look how great the policies are of the Biden campaign. So Biden is moving ever-leftward. And he's showing actually that whoever is pulling his strings is definitely not the centrist part of the Democrat Party. That part of the Democrat Party is dead and gone. There are no more Harry Truman's in the Democrat Party or John F. Kennedy's. Those principles have been squashed in the era of BLM and Antifa and the Squad.
You know, I've got, uh, I've got about a 45 seconds. Caller, real fast, if you can state your case, I'll have James answer it. Quickly, go.
Yeah, the thing I've, I've been trying to call you, but my-
Quickly, caller, quickly.
But anyway, uh, you know, we, we're not proud to put a bumper sticker on there that we're for Trump if we're going to Portland or Seattle or to some of these places because there's a damage to your car. Now, that's not right, but the police are not going to do anything in those areas.
I'll have James respond quickly, if you would, please, sir.
Yeah, that's, he's making the point that I just made, and in polling, it's called a confounding variable. Um, and that is that people who see violence being perpetrated on any car that has a Trump bumper sticker, on anybody who looks like they might be a Trump supporter, they're not going to be inclined to participate in a poll. And those people are not being counted in the poll. And these polls, especially the Fox News polls, are oversampling Democrats intentionally. And they do this, they, what they want, their goal is to demoralize and to make us pessimistic. And the thing they don't realize is that people who love America, it cannot be demoralized by polls. And that they're going to crawl across glass to get to the elections. And you know what? We may have to.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to vote in, in large numbers because we need a big margin to overcome the cheating.
I want to thank you so much for coming on the program. I'm way over time, but I appreciate attorney and, uh, political analyst James Hurson for being on our program this morning. James, you're always welcome here. Thank you so much for taking the time. God bless. Thank you much.
God bless you, Jeb. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Excellent guest on the program, James Hurson. And right now, I've got to hurry and get the weather forecast on. Weather brought to you by Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin, Crane and Company. And of course, they've been providing accounting services to the Minnetonka area for well over 50 years. They are the professionals and the best in tax return, preparation, tax planning, business consulting, retirement planning, all of this and so much more. I urge you to get ahold of them today, the professionals, Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin, Crane and Company, with offices in Burley and Rupert. And right now, here's Gina with the weather.
Summer temperatures continue for the rest of this week and maybe some thunderstorm action by middle of the week. Here's your weather forecast, sunny skies today. We are expecting a high of 90, nice and clear for this evening with a low of 56. For tomorrow, sunny skies, high of 93, mostly clear and 62 for Tuesday night. By Wednesday, we do have a slight chance of rain showers, thunderstorms in the late afternoon, partly sunny skies, going to be muggy, high of 91, 20% chance of showers and thunderstorms before midnight, mostly cloudy and a low of 60 Thursday, pretty much the same with a high of 90. That's what gets your weather for Zeb and Ray.
Thank you, Gina. And the weather brought to you by Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin, Crane and Company. We've worked with these folks for quite a few years. They are truly the professionals in their business of providing accounting services to the Minnetonka area and doing the best for you, your family and your business. Get ahold of them today with offices in Burley and Rupert, the professionals, Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin, Crane and Company. Real quick note too, I want to remind you about our friends over at Patterson's Electronics. Oh my goodness sakes, they've got all, all your electronic needs, and that's not brag, that's a fact. They're open Monday through Saturday, 9 to 6, and they've got everything, home theater systems, video surveillance cameras, car stereos and speakers, all the complete sound systems. Need a new television set? They've got them, absolutely. Samsung, Sony, Toshiba, LG TVs, great selection for you. I urge you to stop in and see our friends, Curtis and Lorena, at Patterson's Electronics, 421 East Main in Burley. Give them a call, 678-6997. Don't forget Patterson's Electronics. Right now, we're going to send it back over to our main studios for the news from CBS. We will be back in about three minutes with more. Uh, here we go, hour number three on this Monday, July the 20th, Zeb at the Ranch, and of course brought to you by our major sponsor, Your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you in a very safe, clean environment, and of course, always the best in tires for your driving safety. And along with some of our great friends like Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley, helping you get back to being you. Before we go to our next guest, I also want to remind you about our friends over at Greystone Crossing Senior Living at 1221 21st Street in Hayburn. Matt and Kelly Wiggins have built and developed a beautiful 12-bedroom home for seniors. It's a wonderful, beautiful place where they furnish three meals a day, plus snacks, plus housekeeping, local transportation. I mean, it's something for seniors to take a look at and call for an appointment today at 650-4979. Once again, that number, 650-4979. Set up an appointment and really take a look at a beautiful living quarters for you seniors at Greystone Crossing, Senior Living, 1221 21st Street in Hayburn. Also, our thanks to our friends at 7K Metals. You can help yourself build your own financial security and future. How? Through silver purchases that come right to your home. This is really a saving opportunity for you and a valued treasure for your loved ones in the future. I've been telling you about this on this program for a long time, my friends Lon Hardy and Sharon, they both will help you and give you the information about finding out more about silver purchases for you. 312-8699, the number for Lon Hardy, and the number for Sharon, 430-3259. Tell them I told you to call and they'll tell you all about 7K Metals and your financial security. Right now, let's go to the phone line, and I have the utmost respect for this lady. She is the Kasha County School Communications Officer, and she's got so many titles, it would take me 30 minutes to name them all off. But we're going to be talking about school and opening school primarily and objectively right in Kasha County for the school year. Good morning, Debbie Critchfield, how are you?
I am doing well. We are scrambling to get information out. As you can imagine, we have lots of questions about what that school is going to look like in August.
I don't even know where to start, and I don't think anybody really does, uh, as far as questioning about what to do, how to do it, where to begin. I can't imagine the turmoil that's going on in the school system right now, wondering the what ifs. Can you bring some of those to light and help us on that?
Well, there's, um, certain things that, that we can say, this is what we know, but as you pointed out there, clearly more unknowns. The Board of Trustees met last Thursday and, uh, made it very clear in their public meeting that their priority was to start school. Now, having said that, uh, what that will look like, um, has a lot of variables, and we're still, you know, seven-ish weeks away. And, um, they've come up with guidelines that will direct some of the operational, not, um, all of the operational aspects of getting kids back to school. The unknown right now, um, and we'll, we're working through this, will be the categories of, um, transmission and the categories of, of cases. And similar to the state guidelines that were developed, Kasha has three categories and they're, they're named, but also colored, a green, a yellow, and a red. And working with, um, local public health, uh, public health is the one who actually determines the category that we're in when we start school. And then the board is, will be then, will then be responsible and have a response, uh, for what school looks like. If we were to start school today, we would be in the yellow, um, and that would, um, mean that we could have a combination of a traditional start, and yellow is minimal to moderate, red, and, um, we're talking about in the schools, of course. Um, that could be a traditional five-day, it could be a four-day, it could be a hybrid of part in-person, part online. Uh, so there's some, some flexibility in there. As of right now, the, the board is anticipating and hopeful to start at a five-day as we get closer and, and work through some of these things, and we'll let parents know for sure.
I think I, I start my part of the conversation off by saying this, that I was reading all the notes that you sent me, and it was said that, uh, you had about 3,000 respondents and showed that 90% of parents preferred a traditional five-day start to school. Would you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
We were interested to see what people thought. We've heard all sorts of things, and we know that this is not a scientific survey. It was something that, that we put together to gauge feedback and to see where people are. We had heard anywhere from 20 to 30% of parents were considering not sending their children back to school. And as, as I'm sure you know, Zeb, with, um, your program, there are a variety of opinion, of opinions on, on this subject. And so we put it out there into the community and we did a separate survey with staff. What is your preference? Five, traditional, five-day, four-day, a hybrid, a blended, all online, all of those things? And the 80% of, um, the 3,000 people who took our survey were parents. And that, that's who we heard from. Now, as things change, um, I, I don't know if, if opinions and, uh, I guess just perspectives will change for people, but that was clearly what the board heard and, and what I have been hearing as well. I think that the messaging that we need to get out there is, starting school does not mean that, that schools aren't going to provide a level of safety. I don't know how this has happened, but there's become a real divide between those who want to start school and those who want to protect public health. I don't believe, and our board doesn't believe, but those things are, are mutually exclusive. We can provide for public safety and health within the, the resources and, and as reasonably as we can while getting students back into some type of routine.
You know, Debbie, I've listened to so many national broadcasts and I've listened to so many people speak on the subject of education. There have been some doctors and some educators on the national level that have said, well, let's make sure that we get the younger children, the, uh, the kindergarteners and elementary ages back in school, and if need be, the older students, like your junior high and high school could maybe do a lot more online. Is there any kind of talk about that going on in the Kasha County school system?
Absolutely. I think, um, we've all seen the report that came out of, um, the Pediatric, um, Association Academy, um, it, it, that was recommending we need to get our children, particularly our young children, uh, back into school. And, uh, we've worked at that. We've, um, done a lot of investigation, not only here in our own state, what are our neighbors doing regionally and around the state, but also nationally, how are some of these things being solved? One of the, the main differences between August and March, preparation. We've had some time, um, we've got some experience under our belt in some weird ways. It feels like we've been doing this for 10 years now, but, uh, we've got some experience. We, um, have been able to, with Dr. Schenk, um, directing the formation of an online school, position ourselves where we can accommodate a, a variety of needs. Um, if a parent's uncomfortable sending their child to school, or, or they live, um, with a grandparent or someone who has, um, a vulnerable health circumstances, this is an option for you. For parents who say, yeah, we're ready to do this, uh, we're ready to assume a level of risk in doing this, we can help accommodate that as well.
You know, we're looking at a situation here, and I want you to really correct me if you feel I'm wrong, but we're looking at the coronavirus- you feel I'm wrong, but we're looking at the coronavirus that has come into this country and wreaked havoc in a flu-like form and yet we're going to be looking at going back into the classroom in the fall where there's going to be more colds, there's going to be more flu influenza around the United States in addition to the coronavirus. And it looks like this is a never-ending saga for any school system to try to combat this when the kids are indoors and germs are easily passed.
Yes, this is an aspect of getting back to school that I don't think gets enough attention. Every year, when kids have been away for the summer, we get everyone back together and there is a sharing of germs. And every year, we always try to make sure that students are washing their hands and we have cleaning and sanitation protocols. As you can imagine, those things are going to be heightened. That's going to be one of the changes. Our focus is to teach kids, but we are going to take time within the day, within the class period, to make sure that desks can be wiped down as kids are leaving and that hands are washed before and coming into classrooms and those types of things. But we expect that there will be other sicknesses and illnesses and viruses that are attached to young people when they come to school that we'll also see arise in there, particularly because we've been so far away from each other.
You know, there's so much to a children's education, whether it's scholastically in the classroom or extracurricular with the sporting activities banned, whatever it is. All of these things are very necessary for the growth and the prospering of the minds of our young people. And when you look at the virus and the chances of them getting sick versus not getting sick, also compared to what they're losing right now, every single day that they're out of school and not educating themselves, I think it's absolutely inherent and it has to be that they go back to school full-time this fall.
That's how our board feels. We recognize that the learning gap is growing into a grand canyon of sorts and those that were falling behind or needed a lot of extra care, those are going to be some of the most critical students. One of the important and I think most key things that's going to happen when we get students back into school is going to be this period of assessment. Teachers are going to need to see where students are. Next year is going to be an interesting year. We always worry about the summer slide when students are away from school for a few months and not focused on the academics and we use that first month to kind of, hey, remember we talked about this and remember these were things that you learned last year? This is going to be an interesting challenge for educators. And we want to create conditions within the classrooms that our staff and our faculty feel safe, that parents feel safe. And we're asking for patience. Things are changing as you know, as best as we can, we want students to get back to school and so that we can, to your point, correct and try to support some of these things that have happened over the last few months.
You're a mother and have children and Deanna and I with our kids and now our grandkids and kids are going to be kids. And when you start making them into trained little robots of making sure that they're physical distancing and making sure that if masks are required, they wear their mask. I mean, this is going to be really tough on the kids to, like I said earlier, become trained robots.
I think there's a point of a reality check of what is it that can actually happen? I know at our board meeting last week, the trustee from Malta, Heber Loffmiller, I think he made a very important statement, which was, we don't want to create any policy or protocol, but all we're going to do is spend, the teachers and principals spend their whole time enforcing it. Then we've lost sight of what it is that we're at school to do. And I think that that really captures the feeling of our board going into it, that we want to be reasonable, we want to be smart. I believe the guidance coming from the CDC is that children under a certain age, I think I'd want to say third grade, that they shouldn't be wearing masks. And I think you can probably find research to support any side of the argument. Again, social creatures, that we create, we remind kids and encourage good habits just like we always have, but to be in a position where, hey, you're standing too close to that student or don't go over there or those types of things, then we're going to lose focus of the priority, which is education.
Absolutely. Let's turn the chair around a little bit and look the other way. What about the attitude of the teachers? Answer that and then we'll take a call.
Hey, I think our teachers are like our parents, they're all over the place. They have concerns. Clearly, this is a virus that we're seeing impacts a certain age band more than our children. And just over the last couple of days, our district has solicited input from our teachers to say, if you believe that you need some special accommodations or what are some of your concerns, that we can work with you within the classroom so that you will feel safe coming to work.
Absolutely. Caller, quickly, I'm down to about the last six minutes. Go ahead, if you would please, with your question.
Yeah, I was wondering when you're going to get rid of Common Core, start teaching real math and real history. Thank you.
The Common Core or Idaho Core is actually what it is. It was approved by our legislature in 2011. That is not a decision for the local board. They teach the standards that are a part of Idaho Core. It is something that is being discussed with the legislature right now. Our local board chooses its own curriculum and works in the community to decide on what books and what students see as part of the actual lessons. But what the caller is referring to is Common Core is a set of standards that are approved by the state. So I would direct him towards the state level and have him watch that process.
You know Debbie, from the time they get off the bus in the morning till the time they go to their first class and then the bell rings at lunch at noon and then classes in the afternoon and back on the bus again, you've got to remain in some state of normalcy because these kids are watching and learning and perceiving exactly what's going on. This has really been a headache for you and the school board in general, trying to figure out what to do and what not to do, has it not?
Yeah, headache would be probably putting it mildly. And unlike other situations where maybe a problem presents itself and you think, okay, well, how have other people solved this problem? We're all doing this at the same time. There isn't any book or any place on Google that we can go to that someone has figured it out. Even when we look globally, we think, we see that things are changing. We look at other countries and we say, oh, we got to do it like that because look, they've been able to do X, Y and Z. And then, you know, within a couple of weeks, we say, ah, that didn't exactly work. And so part of this is going to be figuring it out as we go. I do believe that over the last few months, families, students, teachers, we've all become a little trained in the sense that we're not standing close in line when we're at the grocery store and some of these other things that we have just become a part of how we are. And I believe that students to an extent will bring that with them. I want to quickly say something about masks. We've had two very strong opinions come to the district. One is, if you require my child to wear a mask, I'm not sending him to school. And the other opinion has been, unless you require everyone to wear a mask, I am not sending my child to school. Our board is landing on a recommended, you can bring them, it's a suggestion. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask and we'll have some at the school. If you don't, it is not going to be a mandate.
You know, the mask problem, even for myself as an adult, I can wear that mask maybe at the most 30 minutes and then I have to take it off. I cannot breathe through the mask and I can't imagine asking little kindergartners running around the school to wear a mask during the daytime. To me, that wouldn't even be feasible.
Yeah, I haven't even heard anyone talk about, especially those younger children. But the challenge with our teachers and our paraeducators is that the contact, I mean, your mouth is so important to the communication process.
That's right.
Students are learning that they can see that and they can hear clearly. Many are coming up with shields. I know folks have seen those around, how that works. We've also seen and been able to get our hands on a few plexiglass covers that can come around the front of a teacher's desk. So if a student wanted to come up to the desk, you know, there's some of that. I don't want to give off the impression that we're turning our schools into hospitals because we can't, we don't have the resources to do that. But I do want to communicate that we are taking it seriously and using every opportunity we can to keep people safe, but also make sure that we can have a day that's full learning.
Okay, I've got time for one more caller comment. Go ahead caller, please, you're on the air, please. Caller, if you're there, please, go ahead.
Yes, I was just wondering, for those parents who choose not to take, send their kids to school, are there going to be any penalties? Because I know it's a requirement in the law that under 16, you have to attend. Thank you.
I think it's an excellent question and worth discussing and I'll be quick on that. As far as the school district is concerned, they're going to be very flexible with the attendance policies that they have, as will the state. Every waiver that was possible was given to district back in the spring so that nobody was penalized. And frankly, one of the things that we're asking families to do is to partner with the school. The schools can only do so much to keep your child safe. Parents are going to have a responsibility in the morning to do a health check. If your student's temperature is 100.1, they stay home. And if you're exhibiting other symptoms, leave your child home for a couple of days. If we individually contribute, overall, we'll be able to be successful in getting school back. And some of the same advice, if you've been around someone that's been exposed, stay home for a few days. Don't worry about the homework, we'll work with you. Don't worry about the attendance, we'll work with you. Call in and say, you know what, we're not sure, we're going to leave our child home for a couple of days. We want to work together, but again, it comes down to individual responsibility so that collectively we can get this done.
Debbie, the starting date for school is what day?
August 24th.
Okay, so we're looking at roughly about four weeks away. Is everything set up on a kind of a step graded system right now so that you and Dr. Schenk and the rest of the school board and all the schools and the teachers, are they ready to go?
Yes and no. I think academically, our teachers prepare over the summer and clearly they've been approaching it differently. Our schools, we've been sanitizing and cleaning, we're never going to see a cleaner, shinier school than when our students hit on August 24th. There are other elements and aspects that we're still working through, depending upon what the community spread and transmission looks like. And so we're preparing for those types of contingencies. And then lastly, I will say this, we're all going to have to get comfortable with not having every answer. We're not going to know everything. We're going to work really hard to assist and support our families, but we're asking for patience because we don't know it all right now.
Is there a hotline number or some kind of a call line that people, if they have questions, whether they're parents or teachers, et cetera, that they can call and get information and answers?
They can certainly call the central office. Our website is going to be where I would send people first and foremost. We're also going to have a lot of communication going out in the form of not just emails but videos. You know, it's easy for people to pull up a quick video and watch and absorb the information. We're always open to answer questions and people can email me or call the central office and they'll put you through to my phone line and we're here to help.
I have never worked with a more honest and sincere person in my life and I'm talking about Debbie Critchfield, Kasha County School Communications Officer. I wished I had more time, but we'll do this on perhaps Thursday again and have more discussion. Debbie, God bless you and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to share the information.
You're very welcome. Debbie Critchfield, and she is absolutely, like I said a moment ago, one of the most sincere and honest people that I've ever talked to on the radio and they're going through just pure heck right now, trying to get all the answers for all the parents, all the students, all the teachers and everything for a school opening on August 24th. And I certainly hope it happens. Right now, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Lee's Furniture Floors and More. Don't forget, they're having what they call a sensational flooring event. 48 months, same as Cash on approved credit. You can carpet your entire home and there's three different stages of carpet, three different stages of pricing. The same with the luxury vinyl for your entire home. You can save money and really beautify and comfortize your home by stopping in and talking to the good folks at Lee's Furniture Floors and More. Jeff and the rest of the crew, believe me, they can really take care of all your carpet needs, whether it's your living room, your hall, your bedrooms, and the same for the luxury vinyl. They've got all the beautiful choices for you at Lee's Furniture Floors and More. The address, 459 Overland in Burley. You stop in and see them today, Lee's Furniture Floors and More. Right now, we're going to send it over to the main studio. We'll be back with Vicky's Country Gardens in just a few minutes.
And now, back to Zeb at the Ranch on AM 1230 KBAR. To reach Zeb, call 436-2244 or toll-free 1-866-9274587. And now, here is Zeb Bell.
Over the years on this program, we have had a lot of great segments and nice, nice people beyond those segments. Well, this next one is absolutely one of my favorites. She's a fun, fun lady to visit with and she knows all about gardening and I'm going to be talking to the lovely Vicky at Vicky's Country Gardens, 185 South 600 West of Paul. Good morning, Ms. Vicky, how are you?
I'm just great, Zeb. It's a beautiful day and the wind's not blowing yet and it's going to be a warm one. The plants are loving it, gardens are growing. Everybody's coming in saying, hey, the produce is coming on. So we know we did something right when that happens.
So what are you hearing about the tomatoes and the corn and the beans and the radishes and everything? Boy, is it all fit to sit down and have a feast?
It is and everything's kind of coming on, radishes and that. I mean, if you're still planting radishes, just remember to do them in small amounts so that they come up fast so they don't bolt and go to seed on you. Start checking your produce for your fruits and, you know, the zucchinis and all that kind of stuff. Before long, you might, be careful on them, zucchini, if you miss them one day, they can be three foot long the next day. So just kind of keep an eye open for those kind of things. You know, that's what I've always said, just go through your garden and start checking for the produce, making sure the produce is looking normal, looking right. If you've got the tomatoes sitting on and they've got the brown spots on the bottom of them, as always, we get into that, the first setting of tomatoes usually, that is called blossom end rot and it's a calcium deficiency. You just need to spray the plants with a liquid calcium, then your next set of tomatoes will come on and be fine from then on. So it's just a matter of treating that because of the calcium deficiency that the plant is needing calcium.
You know, I did have an email come in this last week in regards to the health of the growth of produce, whether it's tomatoes or beans or corn or whatever. And I think the gist of the email was, how do they know it's safe to eat? One of the ladies that wrote in said that she's noticed a lot of teeth marks and biting and chewing on her corn and she wondered if she should just literally throw it all away.
Well, and the problems we have right now are the voles and that type of thing that are getting in when you, if you're pulling up spuds and you've got chew marks on them and that type of thing, that's usually a mouse or a vole. To me, I think you can cut that out of there and still use the potato. You know, some people, you know, have a little problem with it. If you're in doubt of some things, you can take and do a 5% peroxide mix and spray your vegetables, you know, wash them good and then spray them with the peroxide blend and it will help take care of any kind of bacteria or anything like that that's on, left on your plants. But if it's actual teeth marks, then I'm going to, we've got birds pecking at things, we've got mice and that that'll climb up and chew on things. It just kind of depends on how tough you are and how bad you want the produce, I guess. Scrub it down good and I mean, you'll cut it, cut back the damaged part and go ahead and utilize it or chuck it and throw it and wait for the next batch. But the thing is, you've got to get rid of what's causing the problem.
Absolutely. Let me ask you this question and a lady sent me a note here, I think it was last Saturday morning, in regards to, once you've started harvesting, whether it's corn, tomatoes, et cetera, how long, how long a longevity does this have before it starts to spoil? I mean, what's the best way of keeping it as long as possible?
Well, you have to kind of, you know, check your stuff. I mean, of course with tomatoes, you know, when they're ripe, it depends on if you like them a little more firm, you pick them a little greener, you know, when they're just turning red. Or if you like a fully ripened one, they're going to be, you know, you can tell by the feel of them, they'll either be really firm or they'll start to soften. Once they start to soften, they're at the tail end, they're ripening and going into the overripe situation on tomatoes and that. You know, and the corn, you kind of have to check, you can usually tell by the silk in the corn when it, if it dries- in the corn, when it, if it dries down really, you know, quite a bit, then that corn's, you're going to have to check and test the kernels, kind of poke a kernel, and if there's still milk in them, they're, it's still viable. If there isn't any, then it's pretty much too old.
Okay, all right. And the other question I had come in this past couple of days was, a lot of people, and myself included, are noticing yellow spots on our lawns. And what about lawn care with all this heat we're having lately?
Well, this is a prime time for the sod web worm to start working on us. They like hot and they like dry. So if you've got little brown spots in your lawn, don't keep watering those. Go out and test them first. Pull that, reach down, take a hold of that grass, and if it comes up real easy in your hand, and there's no root on it, then you've got a, you've got a little bug, a worm down there eating the roots off. And then you need to treat it, otherwise, it'll just keep spreading and getting bigger, and you'll get more spots. As long as that ground is good and moist, you usually are not going to find dryness on a lawn in just small circles. It'll be large patches. So if you've got the brown spots, it can be grubs or sod web. This is their prime time. And the more you water, trying to bring that back, the longer you let them have to chew and eat, because their body structure can't handle, you know, the hot and dry. So they wait for evenings to come up and eat because of the moisture in the lawns. So if you keep that lawn soaking wet, they can eat all day long. So check it before you overwater and make sure that it's not a critter down underneath they're eating. We do have a product that's called Above &amp; Below from Fertilome. That is a very good product that will go down and take care of earwigs and cinch bugs and the roly, the little roly bugs and the sod web and the grub and all that kind of stuff in your lawn that you can put down and take care of all that. Just a granule that you put on and water in.
You know, Debbie, Debbie, I'm talking to the last guest, I mean, Vicky, pardon me. Vicky, is there a lot to be said to about the water that you put on your lawn? We've heard that water out of the canal system can add and create more problems for your lawn rather than well water. Is that true?
Well, you've got weed seeds coming through your canal water. I mean, you know, we do. I mean, you know, the weed, the wind, but not that we have a lot of wind in our area, but the wind blows all those handy dandy little seeds into the water, they go through the lines, they come out in your, you know, they come out on your lawn. So you fight a weed problem, not necessarily a bug problem, but more weeds than you do anything with canal water.
Okay. Now, what about your gardening tip of the week as far as, here we are midsummer and things are starting to come off and be harvested? What kind of a tip have you got for us this week?
Well, I've got a couple of them. If you've got plants that are kind of struggling in the heat and they just don't seem to be wanting to grow really good, remember the chicken soup that we have. It's the product that's got the molasses in it to give them some energy right now. That's what a lot of the plants need, is a little bit of energy to get going. Fares are coming up, you want a good, healthy plant to produce good, healthy vegetables and that. And we've also got a mosquito problem this year, and we do have some product in that's called Mosquito Beater, that if you, you can sprinkle it on your lawn, take care of mosquitoes. You can sprinkle it in around, if you've got horse trobs or anything that are wet, keep it around there, it keeps the mosquitoes from growing and living in that, in those areas. Kind of help our horses and ourselves a little bit with this product to keep it from, keep the mosquitoes from breeding and infesting all of us.
Mm-hmm. Now, you also, and I think this gets overshadowed a lot, and every time we talk, we should mention this, when it comes to decorating the exterior of their home and maybe some home improvements with maybe some flower gardens or maybe some rock gardens, et cetera, you've got all that material over there.
We do have. I have pretty much everything. I've got the bark, I've got three different varieties of decorative rock that can go down, and, you know, it's a permanent situation when you put rock in, you don't have to worry about replacing it all the time. And we have a good, we just got some more perennials in. We've still got a good selection of perennials and shrubs and that. We have all of the different sizes of weed mats that you can put down and keep the weeds down. So if you've got a problem, just come in and talk to us. You can always bring us a picture of what you've got, and we'll try to help you design it out and figure out what you need.
And you have some of the best looking river rock that I have ever seen, and we're real tickled to have it right out in my yard, I'll tell you that.
It is very, very pretty, especially if you're doing any kind of water features or anything like that. It really sets, it really adds a lot of decor to the yard. And just remember, whenever you're landscaping, if you're thinking about selling a home or anything like that, upgrading your landscape also upgrades your price on your home.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's a big thing when people are looking at a home, they like a nice landscape. They don't want to have to come in, tear everything out and start over.
Well, Vicky, right now, at, like I said, this is July twentieth already, what's going on at Vicky's? Any specials or anything that you want to mention before we let you go?
Well, right now, we've got our annuals and that at fifty percent off. We've still got some marigolds and things like that that can be planted. We're going to be doing shrubs at twenty-five percent off right now. So if you're doing any of those kind of things, we can sure help out with that type of stuff. And we still have a full line of chemicals for all of the problems, the bugs, the aphids, the sod web worm, the, you name it that's out there, we've got, we've got products for all of that kind of stuff. And we've even got a few things that can help with them, lovely little varmints and little voles and that, we can run them out of your yard at the same time.
All right.
Not me, but the machine that you're going to put in the yard that can run them off, because I ain't getting near them.
There you go. This lady is absolutely a wonderful person to visit with, and she knows all about gardening. I urge everybody to give her a caller stop in to Vicky's Country Garden at one eighty-five South, six hundred West of Paul, and the number to call, four three eight five six six three. Vicky, God bless you, and thank you for being on the program this morning. We really appreciate it.
Not a problem, Zeb. Enjoy it, and hey, stay safe, stay cool, and just relax this afternoon. It's going to be hot.
I'm going to with an adult beverage. Thank you very much.
There you go.
All right. Thank you, Vicky. Wonderful lady.
Bye.
Thank you. Wonderful lady, Vicky at Vicky's Country Gardens. And right now, we're going to have a weather forecast quickly, and the weather's brought to you by Scarrow's Meats. Hello, Don Scarrow and the crew at three thirty-one North Road, Jerome. Number to call, three two four seven six five seven. They've got all the delicious meats. I mean, if you're having a family picnic, a company reunion, or whatever it might be, you'd better get ahold of them today. They've got all the bacons, all the different flavors, all the hams, all the different pork products. They've got all the sausages and the bratwurst, wonderful, delicious bratwurst. All you need to do is just get over there to three thirty-one North Road, Jerome, or give them a call at three two four seven six five seven. Scarrow's Meats in Jerome. And right now, here's Gina with the weather.
Warmer temperatures continue for the rest of this week, and maybe some thunderstorm action by middle of the week. Here's your weather forecast, sunny skies today. We are expecting a high of ninety, nice and clear for this evening with a low of fifty-six for tomorrow. Sunny skies, high of ninety-three, mostly clear and sixty-two for Tuesday night. By Wednesday, we do have a slight chance of rain showers, thunderstorms in the late afternoon, partly sunny skies. Going to be muggy, high of ninety-one, twenty percent chance of showers and thunderstorms before midnight, mostly cloudy, and a low of sixty. Thursday, pretty much the same, with a high of ninety. That's what's your weather for Zeb at the Ranch.
And I appreciate it, Gina. Thank you very much. She always does a great job on the weather forecast, and we're sponsored this hour by Scarrow's Meats, three thirty-one North Road, Jerome. That telephone number again, three two four seven six five seven, or you can go to their website, scarrowsmeats.com. Don't forget, Scarrow's Meats in Jerome, changing the way we eat one delicious bite at a time. We started a segment on this program, oh, it's been about a little bit more than a month ago, and my phone just went off, and I apologize for that. And it's called Dog Days, and sponsored by Minidoka Animal Control. And the lady that's been on the program has done an outstanding job talking about dogs that are looking for a new home. Hello, Deb Hines, how are you? Is Debbie there? And I'm not hearing anything. Sean, is Deb there or is she gone? And I'm in no man's land here all of a sudden.
There you are.
Oh, there you are. I thought maybe you were gone.
No, I'm pretending to get a puppy or a dog adopted.
Oh, okay, well, we've got to get on the radio right now, and so tell us a little bit about what's happening over at Minidoka Animal Control. What about the dog situation?
Well, we're collecting dogs, especially puppies. Can you hear me, Zeb?
Yes, I'm here. I can hear you barely. It's really fuzzy, the quality's terrible. Tell us a little bit-
I was going to say, I wonder if I should step outside.
Uh, might not hurt. Maybe it might help a little bit. But let's talk a little bit about the puppies over at Minidoka Animal Control, and they need to find some homes. So tell us a little bit more about that.
Okay, well, I've got a bunch of Heeler, let's see, I got in nine Heeler Border Collie cross pups the other day.
Mm-hmm.
And I've still got nine of the pit Heeler cross pups.
Oh, my goodness.
Basically, I've got about twenty-five dogs over here.
Oh, my. And let's talk a little bit about, you said Heeler cross, and you've got some Pit Bull cross, and about twenty-five puppies. My goodness sakes, along with the other dogs, you've got a lot of dogs looking for homes.
Yeah, I've got about forty dogs.
Oh, my goodness.
I've got some in foster that were trying to get honed. But I've got some really cool dogs, and just kind of a heads up, we're going to do a puppy adoption weekend, the seventh and eighth of August. So anybody thinking about wanting to get a pup might want to think about coming over and visiting us.
Okay, now, is that going to be right there at your headquarters?
Yeah, it'll be right here. I'm going to have, I've got a four-H group that are ambassadors, and those kids are coming over to help with the pups so that we can get them bathed and all that good stuff.
Okay.
Just kind of show they're a little farked off.
Okay. Now, I want to ask you something, with these hot temperatures that we've had the last couple of weeks, Debbie, I would imagine that you'd like to make an appeal to all dog owners to make sure that their dogs, if they're outside, have a lot of shade and some water, correctly?
Right. So say it again, I don't, you cut out on me.
I know, we were having some difficulties here this morning. I was just saying that with this hot weather, we definitely need to make sure the dogs have adequate water and shade during these hot temperatures, because it can really devastate the health of the animal.
Well, it will, and it will also make them sick, like throwing up sick. What we do here, and I know this sounds ridiculous, but thanks to the generosity of the community, I've got those little blue pools.
Mm-hmm.
So we fill up those pools and let the dogs, you know, we've got buckets of water, but we got pools, and when they get really, really hot, they can lay in those pools. And they do do that.
Uh-huh. And besides, besides the puppies that you have over there, about twenty or twenty-five puppies to give away, do you want to feature any larger adult dogs this week?
Well, I've got Idaho Fuzzy. He's tan and white, and he is, his name is Pepe, and he is a hoot. He's only about a year old, Zeb, so he is totally trainable, but he loves, loves people.
Mm-hmm.
And he's good with other dogs. I also took in an older Chocolate Lab, and she will stick in your back pocket if you let her. She is really, really a nice dog. And again, she's an older dog, so somebody looking for something that will be a companion and not a pain in the derriere, might want to come look at her, because she's a sweetie too.
Let me ask you, you said Idaho Fuzzy.
I don't want to get a bad dog in here, I swear. Because everybody thinks I'm BSing you, and I'm not.
No, I understand. I understand. You said the dog Idaho Fuzzy. What did you mean by that? What does that look like?
Those, they look like the, oh, crap, you see them tight on the back of these guys? When I first saw them, I thought they were those, what are they called? Can't think of what they're called. Anyway, they got the fuzzy hair.
Okay.
They're strictly an Idaho dog. Let me see if I can find my paperwork, tell you exactly what they are. I know they've got like hurting dog in them, they've got the fuzzy hair.
Mm-hmm.
Like-
And-
Poodle, but it's not a poodle.
And how big a dog is that, Debbie?
Pardon me?
How big a dog is Pepe?
He is about thirty pounds, I'm thinking.
Okay.
He is a tiny little guy, and I don't think he's going to be very big.
Okay. And you call him an Idaho Fuzzy, and we won't look it up right now on the air, but you've got this dog and you've got that Chocolate Lab. Now, what about the Chocolate Lab? You said that was an older dog. Is that a dog that perhaps is housebroken and ready for perhaps a senior?
She's not trained. She doesn't really like a leash, but she also follows. I mean, you know, she walks with you, and so does, so does Pepe.
Okay.
He's been trained to walk, not so much in front of you, but like right behind your leg, and he does not do leash at all, but he will not leave your side.
Okay.
When you walk, he's right beside you.
All right. I want to wrap the program up a little bit, if we could, and say that you're going to have that puppy giveaway day. Now, give us the parameters on that. When is it going to be, what time, and where?
It's going to be at the shelter. We've got it planned for August seventh and eighth, from probably nine to noon, and they can come look at the puppies and see if they want one.
Okay.
And we'll get them squared away and send them home with one.
All right, well, it sounds to me like a very worthwhile project. Give us the location, if you would please, on how to get there on that puppy giveaway day.
Okay, we're at fifty west, two hundred south Rupert, which is a mile and a half east of the Rupert Animal Clinic on the Hayburn Rupert Highway.
All right. And Deb Hines, you're doing a great job over there as the Minidoka Animal Control Officer, and she's literally up to her neck in puppies this morning, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay. God bless you, and we'll send everybody over to get a puppy. Thank you, Deb, appreciate it.
Thank you, Zeb.
All right.
You have a great rest of your week.
Thank you very much. I'm telling you, that lady just absolutely loves animals, and when it comes to fitting a position for a job, that's her job right there. She loves dogs, cats, horses, you name it. Thank you, Deb Hines with Minidoka Animal Control. Want to remind you, our major sponsor, and again, I want to apologize to you folks, we were having some difficulty. I've had quite a few calls coming in here. I can't change or fix anything on the air, but I know they're going to be working on it, so bear with us. And I want to remind everybody about our major sponsor, your Magic Valley LeSchwab Tire Centers. All seven locations serving you with the best of tires, the best of brake service, front end alignment, shocks and struts, batteries, all of this. And they also offer a free pre-trip safety check before you leave on that road trip, where they'll give tire inspection, tire pressure check, look at the wheel alignment to make sure your tires are wearing correctly, visual inspection of front end components, they'll check visually the brake components to make sure everything's all right, along with the shocks and struts, and a visual battery inspection and load test. All of this on a free pre-trip safety check before you leave town to go on your destination. So please stop in and check out all the great tire buys, all the service at your Magic Valley LeSchwab Tire Centers with James and Buell, Dan on Poline in Twin Falls, Lane and Rupert, Mike and Jerome, Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin, The Twist Family and Paul, and Trent on Overland in Burley. The best, your Magic Valley LeSchwab Tire Centers. You stop in, see them today. That's going to wrap it up for today. We're going to put it back in the box and say the way things were, the way things ought to be. And of course, we always end the program with the four words, "In God We Trust." I certainly hope you have a wonderful day, stay cool, and maybe put some ice cubes on your head, it's going to be really, really hot outside. We'll see you back here tomorrow morning at eight oh six.